12th 2016 meeting of the McMinnville City Council. At this time, it's a great honor we have here with us. True from the LDS Church in Amity and Dr. Egan. And what I will do is I'll ask one of them, if they would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. So whoever would like to lead, stand up. You can all lead us.
May I mean the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. It's always nice to see such a fine group of young gentlemen and future leaders in our midst tonight. We hope you learn a little bit about the way the City of McMinnville City Council works and what I have to say. So are you guys all here working on a badge? And what badge are we all working on? Citizenship? Well, welcome, gentlemen. We're glad you came to the big city of McMinnville. So that being said, tonight's a time where we invite citizens to come forward for public comment. And as stated up here on the overheads, what we ask you to do is when you come forward and sign in, that you sign in for the paper record and also announce your name and your address for the digital record. And there's a couple of things that I would need to tell you is that if a topic, if you come to speak on a topic that's already on the agenda tonight, that you wait till that topic comes up, if the city is currently in a matter in litigation that we will not be able to accept any comments on something the city's in litigation in, if it's a quasi judicial land use matter such as a zone change or something, we cannot receive any testimony on that, or if we know that it's a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. And of course, I will limit the duration of these comments. And before we get started, this time, I ask anybody if you have a cellphone, to please put your cellphone on silent. And during our meeting, for the respect of others, that we ask that you not receive texts or send texts or phone calls. And if you find yourself needing to do so, that you go out in the lobby to do so. Because our meetings are being taped for broadcast on McMinnville Community Media on both Frontier and on Comcast. And they're being streamed live by KLYC here in McMinnville. So it's on the Internet. So for that, we ask that you try to keep your phones quiet. So that being said, I will ask if anybody would like to come and speak to the, anything on the, that's not on our agenda tonight. Somebody like to come forward? Come on forward, Cole. And again, state your name and address for the record and then sign in to the paper form. And before he gets started, I just want to, go ahead and sit down, Cole. Before he gets started, I just want to go on record as saying that I am a computer consulting for Mr. Riston. And I just wanted to make sure that got on the public, on the public record.
And similarly, I learned today that Mr. Riston is leasing property from my father. And also, just for sake of disclosure, wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you, Remy. So now, it's all, it's all yours.
Good evening.
And Cole, can you pull the microphone a little bit more to you so everybody can hear you too?
Yeah. Good evening, council members. I'm Cole Riston. I'm the owner of Medical Marijuana Dispensary located at 807 Northwest Adams Street. The reason I'm here is to address a boundary that the Mac City Planning Office installed, a thousand-foot boundary around the tennis courts at 11th and Cowles on around 8 February. This boundary could have a very big influence on whether or not I'll receive and maintain a license from the OHA. The OHA representative informed me, starting in Tuesday around 9:00 February, that the boundary isn't a normal boundary that the city told them to install. That it's the first time they actually received an installation or guidance to do that. But they do whatever the cities tell them to do. And so they did. They told me that, this is a phone call that I have with the OHA representative, between, this is between me and the city representatives on how to resolve this issue one way or another. That when I asked if the OHA, if the city would consider moving the boundary, what would they do? And they said they would remove it. They would do whatever the city tells them to do. That it's out of their hands, it's between me and the city. I said, okay, very well. So this boundary is no different than any of the others that the city has installed around the Aquatic Center and the Community Center. And even the Lynnfield College one that came up and was circulated and socialized through this council. And with the exception that this boundary was installed without being circulated through this council and was instructed from the planning office to be installed. And so I looked into some details about that. And I tried to determine the rationale and the reason for that. And I couldn't. I've had a couple of meetings, you know, with the planning office representative, Doug Montgomery, and with Ron. Ron was helpful in providing zoning information and some instruction on how to go about handling some of this stuff, which was good. And with the city manager, the speaker encouraging me, you know, to move forward with the plans that the city doesn't anticipate that this is going to have an impact on my business. But I am worried about it because the OHA has put a boundary around there as directed by the city. And I'm not comfortable that they're not going to find a way to enforce that. But the thing I was trying to get to was, why wasn't it voted on? Why didn't it go the fruition through the council like all of the others? And I felt it should. And that because it's a city boundary, that this is a matter for the council. It shouldn't just be thrown over the fence to OHA at a planning level like it was. The other thing was that, the reason, the rationale for it. I spoke with Mary Ellen Russell at the district. They have no position on those tennis courts. I think most people here know that the community uses those tennis courts more than anybody. But I don't want to really get down into that. I kind of, I want to get on the schedule for the next session, which is two weeks, and be able to present all of the details. And there's a lot of it. And I need to get on that schedule. So I think that would be the way ahead for me, so I don't take up too much time of your agenda for this evening.
Okay, let me ask Martha, is, do we have, can we get it on? What's our agenda look like for the next meeting?
We currently have four presentations already scheduled. It just depends on how long the council session wants to go. Once again, it's up to your discretion.
How long the presentation, Cole, do you think you're talking about?
I could, I could lay out all the information I have in about 15 minutes.
Okay, why don't we try to get that? Okay, just give Martha Collin or Rose Collin will ensure that you get on the next, next agenda.
They're on, they're on.
Oh, you're on. Well, then you're already, you're already on, so.
Very well.
So you're on the next, you're on the next agenda.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council about anything that is not on our agenda or any other issue tonight? Hearing none, let's go ahead and move forward. Then we have one proclamation tonight. And if I can get that, I think, I think it's in the envelope right there, David.
I believe there may be a giant lemon head coming in your future.
I know nothing about lemon heads. Okay, we have, we have a proclamation. This will be McMinnville's second annual Lemonade Day, and I'm not putting that on tonight. I am delegating to our council president, Kevin, come on up here.
I know.
I'm good at delegating. Come up here. You thought you were going to get me to put it on again, didn't you? Nice try, Nathan.
I was hoping, yes.
All right, Mr. Lemonhead, put that on. You can't feel small at your height. Say hello to your council president. And he is very attractive. Now, if you could grow hair on top of that too, it'd be all right. Anyway, I'd like to read this proclamation. This is for Lemonade Day, and Lemonade Day is a great event. It's the second annual one, and I have to really hand it to the chamber for putting this together. So whereas Lemonade Day is a fun-free experiential learning program that launched in Houston, Texas in 2007, and has grown from 2,700 kids in one city to 200,000 kids in over 35 cities across America and Canada. And whereas there are 400 kids in McMinnville and surrounding communities who will be learning how to be young entrepreneurs by opening and operating their businesses, a lemonade stand. And whereas the community business leaders are supporting and encouraging these young entrepreneurs to be brave and do big things. And whereas since its inception, Lemonade Day has provided access to the experience of business ownership to youth from all walks of life who learn lifelong business skills and principles. I'm sorry, this is going to be, I have to turn over here. I can't do this. And make a walk of life and one lifelong business skills and principles while learning how to make money where they are encouraged to spend a little, save a little, and share a little. And whereas the mission of Lemonade Day is to empower today's youth to become tomorrow's entrepreneurs, now therefore, I, Richard Olson, or I, Richard L., Rick Olson, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 30, 2016, as Lemonade Day in McMinnville. And we urge all citizens to recognize and encourage the efforts of our kids as they learn about being young entrepreneurs while they open and operate their businesses. In witness here whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 12th day of April 2016. Richard L., Rick Olson, Mayor. And I'll sign this for you. Kevin, you can just stand there a little while longer. Mr. Nathan?
Here you go. Good luck with your lemonade business this year.
I will try to hit at least my 10 regular boosts this year.
Yes, that's right, at least 10.
There'll be a new banner picture on the website tomorrow.
That's why I stood back.
It's already viral.
Oh, it's going viral already. Dave, do you have any stats on how many that's hit already? Okay, great. If you've never participated in Lemonade Day, I got to say, you'll find kids all over town selling lemonade. Great project, and I would encourage everybody to visit like I do, at least 10 of them, and get lemonade. So, okay, now that'll take us into our consent agenda. And we're doing our, for the audience, we're doing our consent agenda a little bit different now. And what we have is we have our minutes of the regular and dinner meeting. And then resolutions that are type resolutions will now be included in the consent agenda. But again, as I explained to the council, anyone on the council, if they have a question on any of the resolutions, they can be pulled off the consent agenda for discussion. So I'm going to just read the four resolutions number, then ask the council if there's anything to be pulled off. We have resolution number 201614, and that's regarding a contract for biosolids application project. Resolution 2016-15, a resolution awarding the contract for the city facility HVAC preventive maintenance services. Resolution 2016-16, a resolution awarding the contract for the 2016 city facility janitorial services. And resolution number 2016-17, a resolution accepting the reimbursable agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for the airport improvement project. So councillors, there's four resolutions on our consent agenda. Would anyone like any to be removed for discussion? Okay, hearing none, then, I will entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Had moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Drabkin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on. We do have one public hearing tonight, and that public hearing is regarding a marijuana local sales tax. And so let's, let me get my, let me get my notes out here. Our city manager gives me such wonderful, wonderful notes. So I think this one, Martha, we'll let you open up with this one.
Okay. Tonight's public hearing is referenced back in 2015. I think folks will remember, we had several different meetings, reference marijuana. And this is the final one. Oregon House Bill 3400 passed legislation and allows local governments to place up to a 3% sales tax on the sale of recreational marijuana items. Should the council adopt the proposed ordinance language, which is in your package, then we will go ahead and prepare an ordinance as well as a referral resolution, because this will need to go to the ballot for general voter approval in November of 2016. I know there's been some questions about, you know, any idea on how much tax this, what we're talking about here. And I will say that it's, it's all, it's, I won't say all over the board, but it's very hard to predict. If you go with 2014 revenue estimates from the legislative offices in Org, up in Salem, back, they, they published that maybe we perhaps see $30,000 in a 3% sales tax. If you look at the latest sales number for the month of January, and you do a straight-line extrapolation out of that, it's 90,000. So it just depends, because you don't know the demand, you don't know the price, and there's just a lot of, it's a new business, and there's just a lot of uncertainties in that. But should the council wish to proceed with placing the 3% sales tax on the November ballot, the staff will bring the completed ordinance incorporating any recommended changes here from tonight's discussion to the council on April 26 for approval.
Okay, Martha, before I open it up to general, and this is a legislative public hearing, so I'll open to general comments. Before I do that, is there any restrictions on the 3% if it's approved by the voters of what that money can be spent for?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I meant to bring that up. You'll notice in tonight's language, we did specify it to go specifically to public safety, as while, there's a lot of work being done in the city staff, because just to bring on a new industry with the various permitting and those kinds of things. Longer-term, public safety, just responding to the, whether it be driving impaired, implementation of, you know, preventing folks from smoking it in public. That's where we feel that that would be the biggest need for these dollars.
And will that be, will that be referenced in the, on the ballot?
If, if the council desires.
Okay, thank you, Martha. So that being said, now, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing. Again, if anybody would like to testify, I'd ask you to come forward, sign your name in again for the record. Pull the microphone close to you so everybody in the audience can hear you, and state your name and address for the digital record. So is there anybody who would like to provide testimony on, during this public hearing? Anybody? Okay. Hearing nobody, then, what I will do is I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back around the table. And councillors, vote of the people, if we approve this. Is there any discussions or comments we have around the table? Alan, let's start with you.
No, I think it's in line with most of our other luxury taxes, so to speak. And I think that's, it's something that's a good thing, especially since it would be earmarked in the public safety.
Okay, Remy?
No comments.
Scott?
And no comments.
Let's go down to Larry.
No comment.
Kelly?
I would agree with Mr. Riston, and I support it.
Okay, Council President Jeffries?
We went to so much trouble to make this thing legal, so might as well tax it, right?
Yeah. So do you have any comments?
That was my comment.
Okay, that being said, since there hasn't been any comments by the council, I take it that, Martha, you guys have enough information to go and prepare. Didn't bring back an ordinance and a resolution. And that ordinance to the ballot in November. David, you think you have everything you need?
Yep, we'll have it to you by the next council meeting.
Okay, that being said, shortest public hearing I've ever had, wow. I still like the lemon head, Ben. That being said, then, that takes us in. We do have one ordinance tonight, and that's ordinance 5003. And what this does is amending the McMinnville Municipal Code provisions incorporating a local transit lodging tax. And that's ordinances number 4994, 4974, and 4970. So Marcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillors. The ordinance that is in front of you tonight does amend the existing municipal code. The current code that governs transient lodging tax requires that a formal audit of the tax collector's records be conducted at least once every three years. The amendment that is presented to you tonight would change that to read, "A formal audit of all tax collector's records may be conducted at the discretion of the finance director." Now, the reason that we would like to make that change is because as we were going through the process, and I spoke to a number of other cities, I spoke to a couple of different audit firms, we met with the Visit McMinnville Board of Directors, and decided that we would like to recommend that this amendment be approved. We think it will approve the effectiveness and the efficiencies of the audits. We want to focus on areas where we feel there's risk. So some of the factors that we might consider while we're determining risk would be late payments. Providers that are making payments late, especially on a regular basis, they're making late payments. Other things that we want to look at is, are they completing the tax return forms? Does there appear to be inconsistencies on the forms? On the other hand, if we have a provider who has put, has in process, has in place a great process for keeping records, for tracking the tax, for collecting the tax and remitting the tax, they've proven that they were in compliance because we've audited them before, we may decide that we don't need to go back there and audit them again for some period of time. We also really are looking at these audits as an opportunity to educate providers and really be a resource to providers. We certainly may identify some underpayment of tax while these audits are being conducted. But we do feel that there, it will be a benefit to performing these audits in a more concise and focused manner, other than requiring everybody to be audited every three years.
Okay, thank you, Marcia. Let's start discussion, and Kevin, let's start with you. You're never going to go first, so let's start with you. Any questions, comments?
No, I think it makes sense to do it this way. I would just caution that we don't let too much time lapse between, and I mean, I would hate to see one company never get audited over a long period of time. But I mean, I think using your discretion and knowing kind of who's trouble players and, or who needs a little bit more attention is wise.
You think, Kevin? Kelly?
I think the education factor is really important, and I concur with what you're suggesting here. But I would agree with Kevin that you do want to make sure everybody hits it periodically.
How's our Larry?
It just, and you've probably told me in the past, how many businesses do we have?
We have 48 providers.
So, so, you know, how long does an audit take? Anywhere from an hour to three days?
When we spoke to the one firm, Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick, which did submit a proposal for RFP, Rob Moody, who you know you've worked with in the past, he did say that, you know, a motel, a large motel, may take a day. A vacation rental maybe will take a couple of hours.
Oh, good. No, I think it's great, and I like this of simplifying it and not putting an extra burden on, on your department too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcia, Scott?
As a, as a member of the Audit Committee, Kelly and I've had an opportunity to sit in on some of the discussions we've had, as we've looked at the auditor and received some input back from them. I think this is right in line, giving us the flexibility of where we need to put our resources and the timing on that. Also, as a member of the Board on Visit McMinnville, again, I think they're in support of being able to, again, this isn't punitive. This can be as much of a training piece for especially some of the smaller boutique and vacation, or the, yeah, vacation properties that fall within those ordinances. And we don't want to give a schedule of where we're going to go, because an audit is an audit, and that's, we knock on the door and we're there. So I think this is very much in line with what we ought to be doing and how we ought to be doing it.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Remy?
I do have a couple of questions, and then also propose a slight adjustment to a little bit of the language in the ordinance. But my questions start with, so this risk assessment approach, does that mean you will only audit somebody if they're, if they are delinquent? Or if somebody is maintaining a gold star, that they'll be able to go for years and years without being audited?
Our intention at this time, the contract that you will, that will be presented to you after, after we talk about this ordinance, you'll see that the contract is actually for three years. And that the intention is to audit every establishment, certainly, especially within the first cycle. I think that will help us identify those folks who, as Counselor Hill mentioned, the folks that are maybe smaller establishments and could use some, use the city as a resource. Because, you know, the, these providers are also paying a 1% tax to the Department of Revenue. So I think that there certainly is an intention that everyone will be audited.
Okay. And then what sort of reporting a company's payments and tied in with that? How often are the providers or the people providing the short-term rentals, how, at what frequency do they have to fill out that reporting?
The payments and the tax returns are due quarterly. Other than, we do have information on the tax return where we like them to report their gross rent, if there's any exemptions, and then calculate the tax based on that. They do get to keep 5% of the tax for an administrative fee. And to calculate then what the amount of tax that is due. Also, we've been working really closely with Visit McMinnville. And one of the things that they feel is really important for them to be able to do their job is to have information about occupancy. So we've actually added, changed the form to, even though it's quarterly, we ask for information for each month in the quarter. And we're also asking for how many room nights were available, how many nights were those rooms occupied, and getting occupancy information from folks. So there again, that is an area where we feel we really could educate people so they could understand how to do those calculations, but also that that information is important. And that Visit McMinnville really is working on their behalf to promote tourism, so that we would work with them to understand that why it's important that they fill out all that information.
Okay. And then I just, one last question about this, which is that on the reports that they fill out, is it just a report where they're having to extract information from a lot of other areas? Or is there some sort of schedule or worksheet that helps to prompt and let them know how to accurately fill out the final report?
We do have instructions that go with the form. We really attempted to model our form after the state's form, the state that comes from the, the form that comes from the Department of Revenue. And the state also has instructions. So we, you know, at some point, we'll hope to have that on the website, and we'll be working with Scott on that. But it's a pretty straightforward form. It starts with gross rent and what you need to subtract, what exemptions, and to get down to a calculation of the tax.
And Remy, we do know that the larger entities, they have software that's built. And Remy, we do know that the larger entities, they have software that's built that they, when they, when they're doing close of books, it just brings it right to the forefront. The smaller ones are having to ledger it and those types of things, but our larger entities, it's just, it's a part of their national chain, and it's how it's done.
Well, and that's actually what I was thinking of, was the smaller entities, because I'm familiar with quarterly and annual reporting, and when there's reports that you might not, that might not come across your desk regularly, and that without any malintent, if you don't have kind of the supporting documentation, that people can make mistakes easily, and I'm imagining that the majority of our forty-eight, well, I know the majority of our forty-eight are those smaller, so just tying in with the idea that they'll have the guidance and the education they need, not to be punitive, but rather to be able to do it correctly. Okay, and then the, my, the one thing I'd like to bring up in the language is on, let's see, page forty-nine of our packet, chapter 5.10, line E, there are some, there's a definition of transient lodging, and it excludes things like dormitory rooms used for educational purposes, campsites, recreational vehicles, and as we continue to work on the Affordable Housing Task Force, and we're looking at both affordable housing and addressing homelessness, there is a possibility that some transitional housing will come up, and certainly what we see with the work that Gospel Rescue Mission is doing, that is, that transitional housing could qualify as a, as a, as a short-term rental at some point, and so I'd like to suggest that that language be included, so that's not something that has to go back and be readdressed, so that we would also include, exclude transitional housing.
Any comments on that, David?
Yeah, and I'm just, if you could give me a second, let me pull up the statute, because there's a list of exemptions. If you look at section 510.050, there are, there are a number of exemptions, and we don't list them, we don't itemize them in the, in the coding, was one of the changes we're making referring to the statute, and I just wanted to look that up in the statute to see if those types of housing situations are already exempted.
1320-308.
I would offer that even if they are already exempt, that redundancy would not harm, would not harm the body of this in terms of clarification.
Yeah, the exemptions, and I'm not disagreeing with that, but the exemptions that are in, in the statute that we're referencing include facilities providing treatment for drug and alcohol abuse, or providing mental health treatment, dwelling units used by members of the general public for temporary human occupancy less than thirty days, any dwelling unit which is funded through a contract with a government agency for emergency or temporary shelter, nonprofit youth or church camps, conference centers, nonprofit facilities.
Nonprofit would take it.
Yeah, or other nonprofit facilities are all exempted from having to pay the tax.
I guess, Remy, my way of looking at it is, is that if we put it in ours, and they either add or subtract from ORS 320-308, ours may become out of sync, and by always referencing the state, well, we can make sure that we are always, without having to go back and revisit ours to make sure we're either in compliance or not in compliance, and I don't know if that's really the valid enough reason, but I think it's nice that as we get these maybe in the future, is with the great work that Scott and our management team is doing with our website, is we get these ordinances onto our, you know, onto our website, if they could turn that 320-308 into like a hyperlink, so if somebody's looking electronically, they just have to click on that and they can see, or do a search and it would show them all of those, and so I'm not opposed to adding that particular one, but if you look at all, I was just looking at David's, if you look at all the exemptions, where do you stop? We could have pages and pages and pages of just exemptions.
Certainly, and even within some of the exemptions you read off, that we might already have some redundancy within this, specifically with the dormitory rooms, et cetera, so I certainly don't want to hold up this being moved through council, but if that's the reasoning behind it, I would, I would only then say that then it should be kind of all one way or the other.
I think what, go ahead, David.
Well, and I, because the section I know you're referring to, where we're exempting the dormitory units and the campgrounds and RVs, the state does collect transient lodging tax on campgrounds and RV parks. My understanding is when, when the council adopted our ordinance, we wanted to exclude that, so even though they're paying the 1% state lodging tax, they're not paying the 8% to the city, which is why we specifically named them as exempt here, even though they would otherwise be subject to the tax. But again, I, if it's the council's desire, I'm happy to work on coming up with language to address that specific concern and put it in our ordinance, so.
And we may just repeat nonprofit if you want to, because I can, there, I can't imagine a time where transitional housing would not be funded by a nonprofit.
And I think that'd probably be the best way to address it, just address it as nonprofit, because transitional housing will always fall under nonprofit, so.
And David, just for clarification, our linking up to that statute applies to the date, that's the language of that statute, the day we align to it. So, if legislature were to amend it next week, it would actually still reflect not what next week is, but the date in which we pass the ordinance.
The intent there would be that it, that it is not tied to a specific date, that if the, if the statute is amended to add additional exemptions or remove exemptions, that by referencing the statute, we would pick up at that time, whatever those changes are automatically, without needing to bring it back to the council for further consideration.
Which I believe what David is correct, because if we were saying ORS 320-308 as of, then we would have that issue.
Yeah, I know, state, as we link to federal law, it's back to the date it passed, I didn't know state to city law was different.
Yeah, generally what we see when we're, when we're referencing the state statutes in these situations is it automatically picks up, so, you know, on the day that you need to figure out what that means, you go to the statutes and figure out what's the current statute on that date, that's what applies.
Okay.
Is any more comments, Alan?
Yeah, just briefly, I think I'm pretty much for it. You know, again, the LTL is a new and emerging entity. We know we're gonna have enhanced things and information come our way all the time, and this is a new and improved auditing procedure, in my opinion, so I think it's a good thing. I really feel it's gonna eliminate some mistakes, and I really feel like it's gonna enhance and help with honesty and promote honesty, even though I'm not saying anybody's dishonest, but we do all make mistakes, and it's good to have the, this new and improved version of auditing, and I think it'll help, so.
Okay, thank you, Alan. So, therefore, what I'd like to do, yeah, I was gonna have, oh, Scott, you had something?
Well, I just wanted, one thing that's come to my attention is that I'd heard, and it doesn't per se relate to this, but my understanding is the state is temporarily going to go from a 1% up to 4% over the next three years. Marcia, have you heard anything like that on their tax?
Yeah, I heard that.
Go ahead, Martha, I don't think it did either.
I don't think it made the full four, I do think they went up to one and a half, up to, there is been an increase in the state.
Temporarily.
Temporarily to fund the.
Road track.
The road track meet in Eugene.
Right, okay. I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that it does, this will have an effect on our total tax, because the state's going to be taking a little more, so.
Okay, thank you, Scott. What I'd do then is, we do have one amendment, and what I'd do is make it understood that I'd have David, have our city attorney read the ordinance by title only, and make a note that it would include the amendment under nonprofit under section E, because you don't have to bring it back to us, if we, if we say make the language change, including the nonprofit, you don't have to bring it back to us for a second, we can still go do both readings tonight.
Yeah, I would want to be clear that what we would be adding in would be a specific exemption for.
I think it was just nonprofit.
Nonprofit house.
Nonprofit house, you're not.
A dwelling unit at a nonprofit facility.
Dwelling unit at a nonprofit facility.
Did that cover it? Okay, all right.
So, we will go ahead and we'll make that change.
And I just want, I guess, note that that change would show up in, I would put that change up under the definition of lodging.
So, under E on 510.010.
Add that as an additional.
Yes, thank you.
So, you got that, David?
Yep.
Okay, being that, that modification will be included, what I'll do is I'll ask our city attorney to read the ordinance by title only, so David, if you'd like to do that by title only, please.
The ordinance number 5003, an ordinance amending the McMinnville Municipal Code provisions incorporating a transient, a local transient lodging tax, ordinances number 4994, 4974, and 4970.
Thank you, David, and can I get you to read that a second time, please?
This is ordinance number 5003, an ordinance amending the McMinnville Municipal Code provisions incorporating a local transient lodging tax, ordinances number 4994, 4974, and 4970.
Thank you very much, David. Rose, if I can get you to poll the council, and of course, poll the council president last, please.
Council Dragan.
Aye.
Council Hill.
Aye.
Council Menke.
Aye.
Council Grubbs.
Aye.
Council Yoder.
Aye.
And Council President Jackson.
Aye.
Let the record show then that ordinance 50, 5003 has passed the council unanimously, so thank you, councilors, very much for considering that, and Remy, thank you for the, thank you for making the modification suggestion. That will take us now, in conjunction with that, we do, with that ordinance, we will now move to the resolution, and that's Resolution 2016-18, and Marcia, I'll turn that one over to you also, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We issued an RFP in March for these attestation services, and basically, that's an accounting word, that describes the level of testing and the level of, I apologize, can't think of the word, Kelly.
Outside cooperation?
Yeah, yeah, outside cooperation that they will be doing. We did, I would mention that I sent the RFP to three different firms, the only firm that responded was TKW. They are very well-known in this region for doing TLT audits, and so, given that they have a lot of experience doing these audits, and also that we've worked with Rob Moody before, and we've worked with TKW, and they've always really done an excellent job for us, and we do think that this is an area where we want, it's important that these folks that are out auditing, the providers are very professional because they're representing the city, and I feel very comfortable that TKW will do that for us. I do want to point out that this particular engagement, this contract, is for verifying the accuracy of the collecting, reporting, and remitting. It is not designed to identify those providers who are not currently registered with the city and collecting taxes. So, the process will be that the city will send out a notification letter, TKW plans to be actually doing these audits the week of May 16th. They will write, TKW will write a report after they have finished each provider's audit, and they will describe the procedures that they've done, and they also will report if there's any findings. Now, at that point, it will be up to the city to determine how we choose to follow up, and it may be case by case, it may be a certain situation. When we talked to Rob about these audits, one of the things that he said is that he was, he was okay with us making the change, and he did say that it's maybe one time and all the time he's been doing this with someone really intentionally fraudulent, that typically it's they don't understand the ordinance, they don't understand what is an exemption, so going back again to the value of these audits is being educational, and then working with the city manager and to determine what type of follow-up we feel is really necessary, given the particular situation. I also wanted to mention that the contract for TKW provides for a fee of $21,000 for the first year of the contract, inclusive of out-of-pocket expenses, and Rob did explain to me how he arrived at that number, it's based on the hours they expect to spend on each provider and the cost to their engagement. The contract also allows for a, for the two subsequent years to be $16,250. The reason for that is, this year, we're kind of upfront loading more hotel motels. We didn't take exactly a third of hotel motels, or a third of bed and breakfast, or a third of vacation rentals, so since the hotel motels take more time, that's why the fee will be higher in the first year. We do have six total hotel motels, eight bed and breakfasts, and thirty-four vacation home rentals, and even though the vacation home rentals may be the, collecting and remitting the lower amount of taxes, they probably also are some folks who could use some guidance in tracking and collecting and remitting the tax. Based on that information, we are recommending that the council approve the resolution to award the contract to Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick.
Thank you, Marcia. Do we have any questions in the council, Scott?
Marcia, does the payment for these audits, are they paid by Visit McMinnville, or are they paid by the city, or does it come out of our 30% of the TTNL monies?
After some discussion about this with our city attorney, the, there are some administrative expenses, and primarily these audits, that will be deducted from the total amount of the tax, and so after the audit expense is subtracted from the total amount of tax collected, the remainder will be split between the 30% that goes to the city and 70% that goes to.
It'll be a net amount then, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing done, none. Marcia made a recommendation that we approve Resolution 2016-18, and that's into a contract with TKW LLP, and so I'll entertain a motion.
I still move.
So, move by Council Menke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Yoder, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, let it show the Resolution Number 2016-18 passed the council unanimously. Councilors, that takes us into the advice and information items, and the first thing we have is reports from councilors on committee and board assignments, so we'll just go around the table, let's start with you, Alan, you have anything to report?
Well, yes, we did, we had another meeting this past week, and maybe Counselor Menke would give a better report on it, but we did have a meeting on the homeless task force for the city of McMinnville, and it was, it was a good meeting. Kelly, you might want to say a little bit more about it.
We'll wait till we get to you, if you want to, or do you want to reset the line you have to report on tonight, Kelly? Or let's just do yours and stay with you, so go ahead.
Okay, we, it was the Affordable Housing Task Force, and we approved a charter, which was largely put together by Remy and Doug Montgomery, and they did an excellent job. There were a few changes to it, but overall, we agreed to the entire terms of the contract with a few minor changes. So, we now have a board, a suggested board and a charter, and I suspect it'll show up at the next meeting, so.
Okay, I'd really like to thank Alan, you, and Kelly, especially you, Remy, for taking part of that.
Done excellent work, and greatly appreciate all that she's done. She may have some comments, too.
Okay, so you have anything else, Kelly?
No, I do not.
Do you have anything else, Alan?
No, I don't.
If not, let's move on down to you, Remy.
Nothing additional, thank you.
They talked about it for you, huh? Okay, Scott?
Only meeting I've attended since our last council meeting was McMinnville Urban Renewal, and we had our meeting last Wednesday, talking a little bit about, well, we had two proposals coming to us for the grant funds, facade grant funds, and one of those have to do with a vendor on third. have to do with a vendor on Third Street wanting to replace their canopy. And then Jeb Liddin, they own their block, and they have the one building that has the JC. And we have a lot of problems in that hallway. And so that is going to be completely blocked off. It will be keyed either electronically or keyed, so that that will take a gathering place that has been a real problem. And so we're going to assist in that, that help at that location. The other piece that we just, Doug sent out to us this week, was that we are updating our forecasting of dollars availability and that. And he's reached out to members of the committee that are aware of any development that's coming down the road that could impact that. Because that, if we're going through this forecasting, we want to have as accurate information as possible. And there could be a few things that are on the horizon that'll be put into that formula so that we'll have better, better numbers and better understanding of the dollars that we may have and how soon we may have them.
Okay, great job, Scott. Thank you. Larry?
Both the YCTA and the Parkway will meet later this month. I'd just like to throw out, for any of you, if you haven't taken just a little side trip from the, on the bypass, it's really interesting. I did here in the last couple of weeks, of course, we saw a whole bunch of new beams going through town here in the last couple of weeks. But if you go down there, Rogers Landing, and down by the paper mill, and circle around them back rows, it is, it's quite impressive what's going on back there. And it's really interesting little side trip if you ever get the time.
Yeah, I understand that within two weeks, they'll actually be, within actually a week and a half now, they'll be paving part of West Dundee underneath the main bridge, moving the traffic over to the left, and then starting to dig up the right side. And then when it's done, they'll put the new lift of asphalt on everything. So, and in two weeks, they're supposed to start paving the actual road up to the bridge from the Dundee side.
Stay away from Dundee?
Yeah, stay away from Dundee. You had to stay away from Dundee anyway, I mean, but that's it.
Especially after 10 o'clock at night.
After 10 o'clock at night.
That's now, it was an hour wait just to get 20 feet.
It's tough. So let's go around to Parkport. So Dennis, what's going on?
They go again.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin.
May I?
You, Kevin, Dennis, before we get to, you're much more important. But before we get to you, let's go with Kevin.
All right.
Go ahead, loving hand.
You know, that is a striking resemblance to my actual look.
We know, who knows that?
I mean, the shirts are the same, come on.
Yeah. I just wanted to report that last week, I had a terrific meeting with Senator Boquist. This is, I've known him for a long time. This is the first time I've actually got to sit down and talk about city stuff with him. And he is very, very aware of what's going on up here. Though we don't see him as often as, you know, time allows or whatever. I was just blown away at how truly in tune he is with what's going on in McMinnville and with the county. So just wanted to report that. And also, I went to talk to him about the landfill issue. And since this is a state, DEQ is, has a regulatory part in this. And working with the Stop the Dump Coalition, there's a lot of concern that DEQ is not doing enough. There was a, I think it was the Portland Monthly came out with an article basically saying that Oregon's DEQ is one of the less, least effective in the country as far as backlogs and auditing all these permits at the issue. In fact, there are some companies that are in operation that, whose permits have expired within decades of expiration. They continue to function because DEQ. So, you know, we had concerns. And so we shared with him the letter that we submitted to the planning commission with our opposition to the landfill. And he suggested that we draft a similar letter to the governor, and really pointing out our concerns with DEQ's involvement out there. You know, since it, we kind of have a sense that there's a lack of confidence in the commissioners and the county to be able to regulate this. Because there are some places where they really lean on DEQ to make these determinations and to regulate, and DEQ isn't doing that. DEQ just, they lost their director, and the governor just appointed a new director of DEQ. So I think now is a good time, as they're kind of doing some, you know, internal look at how the agency is going to be operating under the new director. We need, we should kind of put in our voice about our concerns out here.
Okay, to follow up on that, just so Kevin, and I know Kevin knows this, we did a copy of our letter that went to the county, also went to Metro, and to all the Metro Commissioners in Portland, letting them, so they knew as they look at their solid waste policies, that they were well aware of McMinnville's stance. And they'd asked, they asked them to consider, we asked them to consider McMinnville's stance when they look at revising their solid waste policies, which basically says how much can go into what landfills and where. And so we asked them. But I think what I'll do is leave it up to the council, if the council, based on the stance we took, if the council would like to draft another letter for my signature, we'd have our attorney and our city manager draft the letter to the governor, basically restating our position on it.
I think our initial letter may not have hit on the real details around our environmental concerns. And I think that's the point we're going to have to really make in this letter. So I'd be happy to help with the...
I was just going to suggest that as council president, why don't you work with our city attorney and our city manager to come out with the right, saying then if, as council president, you could sign it, or you and I both, as mayor and council president, can sign it on behalf of the council. So I'll turn that little assignment over to you, Kevin.
All right.
Thank you, very good.
Any thoughts on that? Good?
Yeah, I think it's good. Okay, are you done now? Dennis?
Captain, what do you?
Dennis, it is your time. Go ahead, Captain.
I'll just catch you up on a few things. Probably the most important one, if you don't already know it, is that at the end of this month, Kathy Home is retiring after over 35 years with the police department. She has done a phenomenal job. We are very pleased that we're going to, with Martha's approval, we're going to have Pam, who has been doing the downtown enforcement, move into her job because she's in essence been mentored there for many years. So we're looking forward to the transition. We're going to miss Kathy with her leaving. I'm now the second to nearly the oldest, longest-term member of the department. And it's hard to imagine, because it doesn't seem that long ago. But she has been an amazing force in that department, and we're going to miss her. Also, this week, at the OACP conference, where the rest of my cohorts are, we're going to be receiving our reaccreditation approval from the OACP. So we're looking forward to that, proof that we're doing our job. And personnel-wise, oh, we're also working with the Parks Department to start ramping up the park ranger and downtown patrols for this summer. And we've just moved Justin James from patrol to detectives, and hired Michael Meyerhofer as a replacement for patrol, and he is currently in training. And we're still looking to hire one or two more. So that's pretty much what's going on.
So you give the chief the night off, Dennis? Is that it?
No, he's in Bend. He's enjoying himself at a OACP dinner, so.
Oh, I understand.
I didn't get invited.
Martha got that watch's expense required.
Actually, I went last year, so Captain Simons went this year. So we're sharing the experience.
He's paying TTNL for Visit Bend, so.
Yes, that's okay. We took enough advantage of Visit Bend, so that's fine. Thank you, Dennis. Marsha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are working very hard to wrap up the budget for fiscal year 2016-17. So if you haven't already, please mark on your calendars. At the Budget Committee meeting will be May 18 at 6 o'clock. And we will meet here and take a look at that budget for 2016-17. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marsha. Mr. Burke, great job on the, on the three-year Information Systems Plan. What else do you have to say?
I think, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, yeah, we have two processes that are coming to fruition finally. The first one, as you mentioned, is the strategic plan, which is in your packet. It encompasses budget, personnel, guiding principles, council goals, the next 12 months in fair amount of detail, and then the next five years in a little less detail. And every year, we're going to revisit that and make sure that we have the next 12 months under thumb. And after the strategic plan, we have the website, ongoing developments. It is in high gear right now. We've engaged every department in developing content with that department. And over the next couple of weeks, we expect to be putting the final polishes on that and getting it out to council and the public.
Thank you, Scott. Michael, nothing? You're not working on any transportation projects or... So Mr. Palmeroy's been real busy, right? Ron?
Yeah, nothing more to add.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And Rose?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Well, then I'll bring it back around the table.
I have nothing to add either.
I'm going to follow everybody's lead. I have nothing to add.
Wow. You know, one thing I like the state for, those still in attendance that are still here tonight, and staff, I think people really don't realize, you know, we had a fairly short agenda tonight and a lot of things on our agenda. But I think, you know, the heavy lifting that goes behind by staff of development of all of these ordinances, the development of Scott's area of the strategic plan, and what they're doing at the PD, and Marsha with the transit lodging tax, and all the finance, is, you know, just for this agenda, it just didn't seem like, took a long time. There was a lot of heavy lifting. And I just, myself, I really appreciate staff for all the work that they put into making sure the information we get is timely and it's on, on point, which allows us to move through our agendas rather quickly. So I just wanted to thank all staff for allowing the council to do that. So if we don't have anything else, anybody have anything else? Any other comments? Hearing none? Meeting adjourned.